So each candidate today will have the opportunity for a 90-second opening and 90-second closing statements. Each candidate will be asked a series of questions from me, the moderator, and have 60 seconds for a response. Depending on how quickly we get through this, we expect to have six to eight to nine questions from the chamber members. So that's what the cards on the table are for. So if you could please write down your questions and Megan and/or Kelly will help bring them up to me and we really want to get your feedback and some questions and some really good questions. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience to silence their phones and then please show respect to the candidates by refraining from clapping, cheering, cheering, or all that kind of stuff until we give them a big round of applause once the form is over. So let's begin. I'd like to invite the candidates to come up to the stage from Pasco City Council District Number Three, Leo Peralos, who is our incumbent, and from Pasco City Council District Number Six, we have Melissa Blaisdell. I do have a couple of statements to read. Unfortunately, Cleekstow could not make the form today. He just could get peeled away from work, but he did provide a statement. And then with Brian Verhe, we had a miscommunication and he thought the form was tomorrow and he's double booked. So I guess as incumbents, you couldn't have easier to slide through this, but I do want to give them an opportunity to have their statements that they provided to us so you guys can hear. So this is from Cleekstow Hernandez. He would like to thank the Pasco Chamber of Commerce for their kind imitation. Unfortunately, I have prior commitments and he's unable to attend. My name is Cleekstow Hernandez. I have lived in downtown area for Pasco for over 20 years. I've spent my entire career serving marginalized and at-risk communities. I was raised and grew up in a small farming town of Royal City by immigrant farm worker parents who taught me the value of hard work, family, resilience, responsibility, and service. These values have always been my North Star and have led to serve in positions where I can advocate for the most vulnerable in our community. In those roles, I helped marginalized and at-risk populations navigate legal employment and healthcare needs. I'm running to represent District Six on the Pasco City Council because I believe in responsible economic development, prudent management of public tax dollars, downtown revitalization, supporting small businesses, and ensuring we have safe and clean streets. I want to work with the council in addressing the homelessness population by increasing the supply of affordable housing, effective city planning, and smart growth. I want to make sure our constituents and small business owners are being listened to and have their concerns addressed and know their local government is accountable and transparent. All residents deserve to have a city government that works for them. That's why I'm running. Thank you and sincerely, Cleekstow Hernandez. And then from Brian Verhe, running for District Three, I'm going to read his statement that he has in his voter pamphlet. Your neighbor, your council member, as a real estate broker, Brian Verhe understands the challenges and opportunities facing our growing community. Brian will championship responsible growth that protects our neighborhoods while creating good paying jobs boosting our local economy. He'll fight for more affordable housing options, including backyard cottages, so families can achieve the American dream of homeownership. Brian will make sure everyone benefits from our city's successes, not just the wealthy few, but building a brighter future for all Pasco families and businesses. He'll work for you openly and honestly to build a stronger, more prosperous Pasco for all of us. So again, apologize on behalf of them for unable to make it today, but we'll still have plenty of questions and really hope to get some good insight. So with that, we'll start with our opening statements. Leo Peralos, if you'd like to go first, you have 90 seconds.
Awesome. Thank you, Colin. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Again, thank you to the Pasco Chamber of Commerce for putting this on. I was looking really forward to this today to always engage with constituents and business owners. Again, my name is Leo Peralos. For anyone out there who doesn't know who I am, I'm the current office holder for District Three here for the city of Pasco. I have a wife and three kids. My wife, Jeanette, is a special education teacher at the Kennewick School District. I have older daughter that graduated from Pasco a couple of years ago. I have a son that is currently attending Pasco High School and I have a daughter that attends Marina Chess Elementary School. I'll go ahead and start off. I've been endorsed by the Tri-City Association of Realtors in regards to my development and work that we've done in housing. I've been endorsed by the Pasco Firefighters Union. I've been endorsed by retired and current local law enforcement professionals and I've been endorsed by also small businesses. I just believe in getting the basics right. I think that's essentially been my time on the council the last two years. I think I lived up to a lot of things I talked about two years ago. I believe in investing in public safety. I believe in demanding efficient and expedient local government and I also believe in providing good infrastructure so that we can aid in the businesses here. And I also believe by doing that, we can improve the quality of life of every Pasco resident. Every policy that this council has done for the past two years, I believe, has gone to improve the quality of life of every resident. And that's what this council's been about. That's what my tenure has been about on the council and I'm looking forward to four more years to work on critical issues such as the development over at Broadmoor. Right now, we see the construction of the Pasco Aquatic Center. That's going to be a big, beautiful flat area. It's going to attract businesses. I also want us to invest more in public safety. I want to see more cops on the street. I want to make sure that our fire department is able to address calls so that when emergencies happen, Pasco is ready. I want us to work more with...
Thank you, Leo.
Just real quick. I have 90 seconds?
Yes, it goes back fast.
Anyways, if you want to learn more about me, just go to leo@pasco.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. All right, Melissa, your opening statement.
Good morning. My name is Melissa. Okay. Sorry. Good morning. My name is Melissa Blaisdell. I am your current representative for the City Council District Six. I like to believe I have the best district in Pasco, but I grew up here and I have basically downtown Pasco, which is where it all started for Pasco. Over the years, the last 47 years, I've seen Pasco go through tremendous growth. My family has roots here. Most of you know my parents. I'm not married, do not have any kids, so I have a lot of extra time on my hands. So I have dedicated myself to giving back to the community. I have a very big passion for Pasco and I want to continuously give back no matter what part of Pasco you live in. My number one priority is public safety. One of the biggest, I guess, challenges in the last two years since I was on council. I live on the corner of 14th and Henry. I live right where St. Pat's parking lot is and Pasco High's parking lot. Two doors down from my house, there was an active drug house that was selling powdered fentanyl during school hours and I would see it go on and go on and go on and it really, it scared me for the kids that went to Pasco High. I worked very closely with Pasco PD to get that drug house shut down. Since then, they've moved and that block is drug-free. So public safety is my number one and I will continue to serve my community as long as I can.
Thank you, Melissa. So before we get into questions, if you have any questions that you'd like Megan or Kelly to pick up, just kind of grab their attention, hold your card up, be happy to take any questions that you have. I also want to acknowledge too that there are two other candidates that are going to be on the ballot. However, they're running unopposed and they weren't invited to here today. So Pete Serrano with District Four and Mark Figueroa with District One. So let's go into the first question that we have and we'll start with you, Melissa. Let's start with this one. What's your first move if reelected that you'd like to see?
Well, my first priority is definitely public safety. I think it's, I will say that the quality of life when I was growing up has always been there and it's been a great place to raise a family. Do I have a family? Yes. I have siblings and nieces and nephews. I want that to continue for today, tomorrow, and in the future. So public safety is my number one priority and also affordable housing. I want to make sure that if people want to buy a house in Pasco and raise their family, they have that option. So those are my two biggest priorities right now.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Leo, question is, what is your first move if reelected?
Just narrowing it down to one is pretty hard, but I think since we were hit with the news about a year ago that we're facing a $50 million deficit, I think that's been the most pressing issue on the council's mind and that's been on my mind, looking for ways to generate revenue. I'm not looking to raise taxes to an extent. I think we need to look inwards and look at departments that we can cut, either some of the budget or even some of the staff. Places like Yakma are doing a deep dive. I think we are doing the same thing, but at the end of the day, if we don't have stability in our local government, we're not going to have a lot to work from. We're not going to have to worry about police and fire because we don't have the budget for it. So closing that gap, closing that delta should be our biggest priority and that's the main reason why I voted against the budget. I voted against raising increases to some of the senior staff because of those reasons. We need to start really making some tough decisions here coming up real quick and at the end of the day, I don't think we should put on the backs of every resident here in the city of Pasco.
Thank you, Leo. Staying on that topic too, and maybe give us an opportunity to dive a little bit deeper because 60 seconds is really hard to solve the world's problems. I get that. But this question kind of comes in a little bit in line with, more recently with the acknowledgement that the health insurance fund, I guess, is underfunded and obviously you mentioned the looming budget deficits. How can council guide city staff to still make, still provide necessary services and service levels with potential cuts such as permitting and other things that businesses in Pasco would have to depend on? So that's you, Leo, if you want to start with that one.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, sorry. I was summarizing, but with city shortfall with the health insurance fund and I think what they're referencing too is that there's money that's going to be coming out of the economic development department and looming budget, other looming budget deficits. How can the council guide city staff to still make necessary service, provide the necessary service levels such as permitting and other city operations that businesses in Pasco depend on?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I think I talked about it at the council meeting. I think given the fact that we have to take up to $6.5 million out of the economic development fund, I think some level of service is going to go down. I mean, there's been talks about maybe pulling back even on the growth because we don't have the infrastructure in place to maintain that growth. But when it comes down to that, I think one thing that I've learned on council is that you don't get a lot of information if you don't ask the right question. So I would say being told that our health plan was underfunded essentially in the negative was blind signing, but I mean, that's the same thing that happened with the budget a year ago. We were just spending money my first year, just like it was normal, then all of a sudden on October Sunday, I read the pack and we're looking at $10 million deficit and up to 15. And so it's getting the information, it's bringing this to attention of the council because in my opinion, we should have been making other budget changes prior to this happening. Now we're having to take money out of another fund to pay for this. So that's going to affect a level of service whether you like it or not. But in regards to the permitting and stuff and the business license, I think at the end of the day, we need to look to some type of small tax increases in regards to help fund that and we're looking into that. But right now, we're getting a lot of information and I don't feel comfortable making promises or saying that we're going to make this decision or not, but that's something that's on top of our minds, believe it.
Melissa, the question, with the city's shortfall with the health insurance fund and the looming budget deficits, how can council guide city staff to still provide necessary service levels that businesses in Pasco depend on?
This is such a hard question because there's four of us in the room, I think, if not more. And this is business talk when we're not in a council meeting, but you know, there's a lot of, I guess, unanswered questions that we still have that we need to find the answers out. Last council meeting, we did have a discussion about it in executive session and then we had it on city council, the regular meeting, and it wasn't brought to us at a workshop meeting. So I asked to basically postpone the topic so we could get more information, we could ask hard questions. I still have a lot of questions. I can't give you, I guess, a direct answer regarding the medical insurance and how we got to this point, but I will be finding out the best possible answer for all of us because number one, it's all of our money. So I want to make sure that we're spending it accordingly.
Thank you, Melissa. So you get this next one first and keep me honest if I get out of order. I think I can probably handle between the two of you, but just let me know if I start off. So this next question is a statement and a question. So no one or no council is perfect. What is the one thing you hope to change with this specific council moving forward?
Well, I think, and forgive me, but the council that we have now, I think we work really good together. There's some of us that ask the harder questions, some of us that work behind the scenes are a little bit more, I guess, quieter. We all bring certain strengths to the table. And I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah. So what is the one thing that you would hope to change with this specific council?
I would hope going forward that we can continue to work together because I believe in the last two years, we've made huge headway. To change, I think transparency and really diving into why the last, why we're in such a budget deficit, number one, and how we can change it.
Thank you. Leo, so no one or no council is perfect. What is the one thing you hope to change with this specific council?
I think this council's getting there, to be honest. I think we're, I think we're the most active council in the Tri-Cities. I think we're the most responsive. I mean, on day one, we wanted to add public comment to our workshops. There's not a lot I would change with this council. I really don't have a good answer for you other than the fact that I think, I think maybe perhaps telling the council to be, for us to be a little bit more patient. I think one thing we don't like is waiting on issues, waiting on the staff report. You know, why can't we just change things sometimes a little bit faster and just waiting on that kind of clay-like bureaucracy? I think that's the thing, I believe, I'm trying to change it by myself the past year, year and a half, just kind of, you know, being aggressively patient, but there's just so many pressing issues. I think a little bit, I'll jab at my council members, really looking into the quality of life issues, whether it's the fireworks stuff, speeding cars, you know, changing this stop sign here. I think those are the things, because I honestly thought when I got on, we were going to be able to change that stuff rather quickly. So it really comes down to just those quality of life issues that aren't the real sexy ones like economic development and paying for infrastructure and stuff like that, but just kind of those, you know, tabletop discussions that residents care about.
Okay. Thank you. So next question starts with you, Leo, and there's a couple of questions, so I'm going to combine them because it's the same topic here. How do you plan to support Pasco business owners who have to deal with the homeless/mental illness population impacting their, and the open air drug use impacting their day-to-day operations, specifically in downtown too? So combining both, obviously we're one big city, but I think maybe...
Well, yeah, no, I think it's a great, it's a great issue to bring up. I think it's very sobering. I mean, a couple of weeks ago, we had the Franklin PD come and tell us essentially that if we don't start cleaning up the homelessness, that they're going to leave the downtown area. I think honestly, in the next four years, I want to touch that gray line. I think, I think we all need to understand that there's a lot of legislation from the West Side that hampers our law enforcement and also our fire department from doing their job, whether it was the Blake decision, the Grants Pass decision. These are things that are holding us back almost on a daily basis. A lot of the stuff has gotten cleaned up, but honestly, we have what's called the blue flu. We have officers who don't want to react because they don't know if they're going to get their police certification taken away just by doing their job. I think we need to stand up and I honestly, I'm really sick and tired of seeing the homelessness situation not getting any better. We haven't had the infrastructure here for decades with the Columbia Valley Recovery Center. I think we're going to get there, but if you go watch any county presentation, sometimes they don't know where the money's going, they don't know, there's no organization. So the city needs to be a little bit more involved with that stuff. It's mostly seen that from a county level perspective, but we also need to tell our police officers, you know, we need you to clean this up. I know this is the line right here. I want you to get as far as you can do it to start cleaning this place up.
Thank you. So Melissa, the question is, how do you plan to support Pasco business owners who have to deal with the homeless/mental illness and open air drug use population impacting their day-to-day operations?
Well, I believe I currently already support the downtown businesses that is in my district. If anyone reaches out to me or if I go down there and just listen to what they deal with on a daily basis, I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to try to solve their problem and honestly, let's face it, this problem isn't just in downtown Pasco. Homelessness is on a rise, city, state, all over the country. The problem is so wide that we can't fix it with a snap of a finger. It's not going to happen overnight. Does anybody have the magic answer on getting this fixed? No. I do think the Behavioral Recovery Center will definitely help Tri-Cities and Pasco to get people the help that they need. It breaks my heart because honestly, I know someone that was close to me and recently I found out he's been homeless since he was 14 and he's now 30. How does that happen? How do you choose that lifestyle?
Okay. Let's go on to another topic and this is kind of a little bit more open-ended, but it cites a specific issue as well too. So the question is, and this starts with you, Melissa. When making a decision for all of Pasco, such as fluoridating water, how much weight do you give medical professionals such as dentists, doctors, et cetera, when making your decision?
So this is a very hard topic. I have had my dentist that I grew up with, that has been my dentist for my whole entire life. He's against getting fluoride taken out and he's retired. I have my current dentist that's okay if we take it out of fluoride. I have heard every community comment and I live in a district that is going to be very affect, it's going to impact that, my district very much by the people that live in my district. And at the end of the day, I have to outweigh, not about how I feel about it personally, how it's going to affect everyone in my district and not just my district, but everyone in Pasco. I'm not taking that decision lightly, but by any means, I'm also not a medical profession. But I have to do my own research, ask the questions, and listen to public comment before I can make the right decision.
Okay, Leo. You want me to read the question again or you got it?
No.
All right.
I appreciate the question. I honestly don't think there's an answer I can give. There's probably going to be skeptics out there. They're going to say that that council member doesn't want to read the science. I think at the end of the day, I think people should make their own healthcare decisions. Obviously, I could lose a couple of LBs, right? I should probably listen to my doctor a little bit. I just, I find it odd that we can't even be skeptical of the science. We can't question it anymore. I think a lot of this stems from COVID. I just don't feel like the government should be making healthcare decisions for people. I think that's at the heart of it, but when you're thinking about everyone here in the city of Pasco, it's going to be a tough decision, but I just going to go back to, I think, when I ran for council, I want the power to be back in the people. And so whether it's medical decisions, they should be making that decision. So that's why I've been a big supporter of a public vote. Let the people decide, let them do their own research and let the people of Pasco decide. I was the same way with marijuana. The council decided on marijuana, which I thought was also kind of a medical decision. And the council, I told the council to do a citywide vote and they chose to go with making a decision on their own. So I'm not, I would say my vantage point is I'm not questioning the science, but I do weigh it, I do read it. We've gotten a lot of good comments from a lot of people here in the community, from the dental industry, and so we're, I'm definitely weighing those comments in my decision.
Thank you, Leo. Starting with you on this question, Leo, and kind of shifting gears again. In these days of political polarization, how are you as a council member going to work to bring Pasco together as a community?
I try to keep the city of Pasco and my residents informed. I think that's the way to bring people together, to educate them. You know, again, I think a strong statement that we made as a council is by making public comment at public workshops. A lot of people don't like doing that. They don't want to hear from the people. I don't care if it takes two hours at a city council meeting. If you want to come to the council meeting and address us, let us know that we're doing a good job or a bad job, you have that right. But by bringing people together, I think it comes down to putting policies in place that impact and increase people's quality of life. I mean, that's what they want to see. They want to see that their tax dollars are going towards things that are improving their commute home, that their kids are able to, you know, add a little more recreation to their lives, that they're able to go get, that they're able to go get good jobs and get a good education. So I think policies is what can bring people together and that's kind of been my position on the council.
Okay. Melissa, the question, in these days of political polarization, how are you as council member going to work to bring Pasco together as a community?
Well, if anybody's had a conversation with me, they know that I hate politics. It's not my number one thing. That's not why I got into city council. I got into it to serve my community. I absolutely love Pasco and if you live here, you probably share that same passion because if you didn't, you could go and live in Kennewick or live in Richland. What I love about Pasco the most is our diverse community and that we can have events in downtown Pasco, we can have events like even coffee with a cop, any event that we have in Pasco, if you attend, it's welcoming. It doesn't matter who you are. I want to continue to have that, I guess, that open community family because I can, right now, I can look out into the audience and I see people that I grew up with and that I've known all my life. I want the community to have the same, the same heart as I do to understand that Pasco is really the best community in the Tri-Cities.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, next question, and the next two will kind of under the development sort of category here. Besides the riverfront developments currently underway, what other developments are on the horizon for Pasco? Yes, it is.
Can you repeat the question?
Besides the riverfront developments currently underway, what other developments are on the horizon for Pasco?
Well, it's no secret, we do have Broadmoor that we want to make sure that we develop And without, I guess, talking about too much of what we're going to do, we have the Aquatic Center that's coming on board. I do think that we need to strategically make sure that we have a good revenue base where Pasco is lacking. A lot of people go to Kennewick and Richland to shop and that's, we're losing money if we're not shopping in Pasco. Do I want to see a Trader Joe's in Pasco? Absolutely. Do I know how to get them here? There's people that could possibly make that happen. I'm not saying that's one, but that's my own wish list and I know there's a lot of people that probably agree with me on that one, but I do think that we need to have businesses that can continue to thrive here, just like we have Dairy Gold, Amazon. The port has played a big part in bringing businesses here and that's why we're growing so fast. So I do think that Broadmoor is a huge part. So I do think that Broadmoor is a huge part of that.
Thank you. Leo, besides the riverfront development currently underway, what other developments are on the horizon for Pasco?
So I guess just talk about what developments.
Yeah, or what you'd like to see too.
Okay, yeah, other than the Osprey Point development and some of the other stuff, I think we're seeing a lot more development over at Broadmoor with the, with the TIF financing, with the Pasco Aquatic Center being built there currently. We just rezoned a parcel over there that we're going to see townhomes, apartments and other amenities over there, mixed-use developments. I see a lot of stuff over on the east side of Pasco happening. We were having a ribbon cutting today at Tierra Vida, phase three. The heritage development is kicking off. I've seen some people out there doing land surveying. That's right, that's north of the Port of Pasco, right, right, kind of kitty corner of Tierra Vida. I see a lot of infill construction going on here in our southern Pasco. So construction is strong, but I will note that it is, it is lower compared to other years. A report just came out that housing permits are down by about 20,000 here in the state of Washington. So there's a lot of headwinds that developers and builders and stuff are still seeing. But I do see an increase in kind of industrial and office space. I don't know, I think the Port of Pasco just bought some property, secured some property, I believe. So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on and we need to be cognizant of that and sure that we're not putting barriers in front of the development.
Okay. On sort of the same topic of developments, and the question is, what are backyard cottages that candidate Verhae alluded to and how do you feel about those? That's for you.
Talking about accessory dwelling units?
I'm guessing that's what he's.
Yeah, he's been kind of on that. He's been banging that drum pretty hard. I think ADUs, they've been a thing for the last, I don't know, 10 years, along with tiny homes. And some new legislation has came out where you don't have to go through some of the same permitting process. But a lot of people are building ADUs. Over when I lived on Charleston, I had about three neighbors build ADUs for their grandparents and other loved ones. So no, I think that's something that, city of Pasco actually has a great ADU handbook. You know, we try to stay on top of a lot of the legislation and I wish we had a couple more of the questions about, about that. But no, I think that's a great, it's a great, it provides more diversity in regards to the housing stock, but that we're not going to ADU our way to affordable housing if that's what he's saying. I just don't see that. I think we need to reduce regulations, watch our fees, watch our fees so that people, so that developers and stuff can just build and do what they do best.
Okay, Melissa, what are backyard cottages that candidate Verhae alluded to and how do you feel about these?
I mean, I think there's a lot of properties in my district specifically that, well, I guess I'll take my house for example. I bought my house as a single-family home, but back in the eighties or seventies, it was actually turned into a single-family home with dwelling. It's not listed as a duplex because of, they didn't go, I guess, do the proper permitting. But it's got two separate meters, two separate. It's actually been really nice because I have someone living next to me and I think there's a lot of those properties in downtown Pasco that have, that I guess aren't necessarily coded properly. But people can actually live in them and afford to live in them because they're dwelling units. So I guess I'm in favor for it. I don't.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have time for maybe two more questions, so I'm going to see what. Okay, give me a moment here while I read these. Let's, the next question, and Melissa, you get to start with this one. Are there any low-hanging fruit initiatives that the council can focus on next year? I didn't make it.
Low-hanging fruit, huh? Gosh, talk about putting somebody on the spot. I, my mind completely goes blank when I'm, I feel like everything that we're dealing with is big projects. Low-hanging fruit, I feel like we've already tackled all the low-hanging fruit and tried to like remove the, make it easier for homeowners to put up fencing or... So I guess I really, in the next year, I see everything that we're tackling as big projects.
Leo, same question to you.
I think with the changes that we've done with the speed setting policy, I think going around and talking with residents and seeing what streets they would like to lower. I know over where I live, I would like to see our streets lowered to about 20 miles per hour. There's a lot of just trucks and stuff that like to speed by when our kids are outside. I think that's kind of low-hanging fruit. We've already put, put the policy out there, let's go implement it here at this point. I think also telling our police department to prioritize public safety in the downtown area, going after the homelessness. Again, shutting down encampments when people are putting them up, telling, educating people on the Ask Pasco app. I think those are the kind of low-hanging fruit items that I think a lot of residents want us to see addressed.
Okay, we'll finish with this question and we'll start with you, Leo. How will you ensure meaningful public input on major decisions, especially from populations less likely to engage in government?
Well, I think the city of Pasco does a pretty good job. I know we've been pretty hard on our staff about having public engagement in regards to certain issues, whether it's the development community or even with fluoride. We've had many community listening sessions. I think utilizing social media, our person in the back who does social media is doing a very good job on that. I've seen a lot of good stuff come out recently, whether it was about fluoride, whether it's about the transmission benefit district. Social media is a great tool, but also just going out. You know, we're, we're in campaign season, so door belling is a thing that I like to go do and talk with people. But I think just going, finding out where those big population centers are at, going talking with them, coming to the Chamber of Commerce meetings, going anywhere and anywhere, you know. And again, utilizing the TikTok, the Instagram, that's how we're going to get the information out there and engage with people.
Melissa, how will you ensure meaningful public input in major decisions, especially from populations less likely to engage into with government?
I personally always try to be engaged with the community, whether it's going to luncheons or going to events that the city holds, getting involved with as many boards as I possibly can, just talking. Leo mentioned door knocking. It's funny because I have met more people door knocking that some people, and they don't vote, but they'll, they'll tell me something, well, can you, I'm having a problem with, this is just random. I'm having a problem with, I think they're dealing drugs over there. I'm like, oh, well, that's my main initiative on my door hanger. So, and they feel more open to speak about it. I'll listen and do what I can within my, I guess, job duty. I won't, if it doesn't have to do with council, I won't overstep my job. But I will always listen and help and try to guide a community member to, if it's staff, or try to get them the help that they need.
Time flies when we're having fun, right? So with that, I know we didn't get to all your questions out there. But before we do closing statements, I encourage you, if your question wasn't read, to come talk to these two candidates and maybe they'll be able to help guide you on what their position is on, on these great questions. I feel bad not getting to them all. So with that, Melissa, your closing statement, you have 90 seconds.
I've made it clear that I love Pasco. I think everybody in this room knows that. I would love to serve Pasco in the next four years. And you know, sometimes it, the job isn't easy. We've been faced with challenges that are very difficult, that we have to outweigh what is truly best for Pasco. But I promise that in every decision that I make, I take everyone, I look at it collectively and make sure that I am making the best decision possible for not just myself, not just one political party, that I'm making the decision the best for everyone in the community. And, and that includes my district. I hope that you will retain Melissa Blaisdell, City Council District Six. And if you do live in my district, I appreciate your vote.
Closing statement, Leo.
I'm going to put my timer on this time. No, I really appreciate, again, the ability to come here and, and answer questions because I, and I, and I really appreciate Brian too. I told him when he ran, you know what, I'm glad you ran because it keeps, it keeps somebody like me honest, right? Telling the people what we've worked on, accomplishments that this council's made. If you want to learn more about the accomplishments that this council has made, and that's one way, one thing I've talked about a lot is that it's not about me. I think a lot of times when we run a campaign, it's about you, right? You got to tell people what you did. But it's really been, it's been a team effort. It really has, and I've been very happy to work with the mayor, with Mayor Pro Tem and just the whole council and the amount of things we've accomplished. So you can see all those accomplishments at leoforpasco.com. Again, I'm about three things, investing in public safety, you know, leaner, more efficient city government, and then just investing in our infrastructure and hopefully that will increase our quality of life. This has been one of the most humbling experiences that I've ever had, serving the city of Pasco. It's everything I thought it was going to be. I wish it was more of a full-time job. I think sometimes I make it a full-time job just because I love it so much. Serving the people here is just, it's been a blessing to me and my family. And I want to continue four more years. I think there's a lot of critical issues we still need to tackle and I want to see those get done. And along with this council, I truly believe it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. So you can watch the rebroadcast of this forum online at Pasco City Television or on Charter Channel 191. This concludes our forum portion of the luncheon, but I would like for everyone to please give a round of applause to our candidates.